Oh, I had that two weeks ago. Oh, I, about two weeks ago I had it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Thank you all for being here at this first meeting in the month of July. It seems like June just ran by us. But here we are. Um, thank you all for being here. I would ask that everyone silence your cell phones and, uh, that's me included. And we will prepare for this meeting. Commissioner Clark, would you like to lead us in the pledges?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we'll start with roll call, then we'll move on to invocation. Uh, roll call with District One first.
Deandre Knoxen, District One.
Keith Love, District Two.
Thelma Bowie, Commissioner-at-Large.
Dedric Johnson, Mayor.
Abel Garza, Commissioner-at-Large.
Jamie Clark, District Four.
Thank you. Let the record reflect, we do have in quorum established six of the seven commission members present. And we will now have the invocation. We're thankful to have with us today Pastor David Buckley of Sanford's Temple Church of God. And Pastor Buckley, go ahead and make your way. And, um, if you have any community announcements or church announcements you'd like to share with us, you can do so after we do the pledges.
Yes, sir. God our Father, we thank you now, God for all things. God, we thank you for this day, for this is the day that you've made. And so, God, we rejoice and be glad in it. So, God, we thank you for being here in this city meeting, this city council meeting. God, we thank you now for all of the, uh, officials. God, we thank you for our mayor and all those ones that serve with him. God, we thank you for every department head. God, we pray now for them and for their families. I pray for the city. I pray now, God, for the family of the members of these cabinet members. God, we thank you now. We ask you, God, to have your way in this meeting. We invite you in and your presence to dwell with us. So now, God, we ask you, God, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Amen. As we approach July 4th, please join me in our pledges to our great nation. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas flag?
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to deep Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Pastor Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this opportunity to share. Uh, the Sanford's Temple Church of God in Christ is, um, uh, part of the Pentecostal movement. And we're gonna be having, um, a women's conference in August. Um, the, the date is the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth of August. And we're asking everyone to come and support, uh, that event. Uh, it's, it's an event open to the public. We are located in West Texas City, fifty-five oh eight Phillips Street, and, uh, in Texas City. And I always say that if you're looking for a church to come and visit on Sunday morning, uh, we invite you to come. And know that it's not a quiet service. It's a very lively service. Uh, it's Pentecostal, and so we have a great time in God. So we invite you in. God bless you and God keep you is our prayer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Also wanna let the record reflect, we are joined by Commissioner Sharp. We do have a full, full panel up here on the dais. Thank you. Uh, we have, um, at this time, we're up to reports. Reports we're gonna hear from our Department of Recreation and Tourism as we have a report on the Texas City Museum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Shelby Rodwell. I am the curator at the Texas City Museum. I'm very happy to share with everybody just a little bit of what we do. So at the Texas City Museum, we strive to be the center of Texas City culture, history, and education through a, through a few different, um, efforts. Uh, one, the preservation of artifacts that has been donated to the museum. We have a great effort in, uh, producing rotating exhibits out of those collection items. Um, we create events, both public and private. We do independent research, create tours, and also oversee some historic homes in Texas City. Some of our permanent exhibits, uh, include the Galveston County Model Railroad Club Model Train Display, um, our Dahlgren Canon, the music legend Charles Brown, the nineteen forty-seven disaster, and more. Um, if you have not seen it, I highly recommend you come and say hi to me someday. Come visit. Throughout the year, um, and especially this year, we have put, uh, an extra effort into creating temporary exhibits that we rotate throughout the year. So, so far, we have had four exhibits, and we are ramping up to, uh, open our fifth this Saturday. Part of the effort included updating our temporary exhibit room. So you see two photos here. The top photo is the before, the bottom is the after. Um, just a couple quick coats of paint and some new lighting really made a huge difference. So some of the additional properties at the museum oversees the Bell House and the eighteen sixty-seven Settlement District. We also oversee Heritage Square Park, so the four homes located there, the Davison Home, Engineers Cottage, Moore Home, and then the Wetzel Home as well. This is just a quick overview of annual memberships. Uh, the great thing about the memberships is both residents and non-residents alike can purchase an annual membership, and they will have access to the museum, including all of our temporary exhibits, uh, for one calendar year. It also includes most of our special events, and it is a tiered membership, um, so that it can fit the needs of the individual. Daily visit, visitation, of course, ranges from four to seven dollars. Uh, we also do tour groups, both private groups and school groups. For school groups, that is, uh, no charge. We wanna make it as accessible to, uh, our local children as possible. Um, and then for private groups that call us in advance, it is five dollars per visitor. We also have an, uh, add-on option for the historic homes, so visitors that come to the museum can pay an additional dollar, and we will take them to the homes. Thank you. This is a quick overview of the past five years of museum attendance. Um, it, uh, is up to June of this year, so I do expect this fiscal year to be comparable to the last year's. Um, it ranges from about forty-five hundred to five thousand visitors a year. And this is a brief overview of the attendance for the, um, historic homes. So the blue would be Heritage Square, orange would be the Bell Home. Um, again, this is up to June twenty-twenty. July and August tends to be our biggest year, so I do expect it to be more comparable to last year as well. Thank you, and do I have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Shelby.
Absolutely.
Commissioners, any questions?
I have no questions. I just think, I just wanna say, I think that's one of our really treasures in Texas City, that, that...
I might be biased, I agree.
Yeah. A great job, though.
Thank you, thank you.
Lots of people visit the museum, or still visiting the museum for the first time.
Yes.
And they always come away with, you know, "I didn't know that was there. I didn't know they had this," and so, great.
Yeah, this next year, it's, it's my, my goal to make it less hidden, but keep it the gem that it is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this time, we're up to public comments in our agenda. We did have one, uh, person who submitted a request to address the commission. We'll call Mr. Jose Boyks to the podium. Let me remind everyone, we have up to three minutes to address the commission, wishes to speak about best zoning, uh, to SP District.
Thank you, uh, Major Johnson and Commission. Uh, I'm here in support of the battery's energy storage system. I am, I'm very supportive of the concept, especially the, uh, pyramid. They have been very open in the community. My only concern and comment that I have is to try to shoehorn, what I feel, that's my own words, shoehorn the, the, um, the zoning into an SP, uh, zoning that is already there. I think it should be, it behooves us all to create a specific battery energy storage system that is separate, and it's only for the battery system. It's a new concept. We don't know much about it. We're learning it. But it's more related, in my own mind, with an industrial facility. And we have several zoning, you know, light industrial, maybe the P-one. Uh, I didn't look through it, and, uh, you're the experts. You can fit it better. But to me, I felt that the best shoehorn into an SP, it was, it was kind of tight fit. It, it didn't, it, you know, when you start looking at the SP, uh, description, it begins to talk about residential. People would challenge mobility, um, and it just didn't, it doesn't sound right, that an industrial facility is inside of something that is basically community. So anyhow, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Boyks. Okay, at this time, we are up to the consent agenda. Uh, Commissioners, you have before you three items, A, B, and C, for your consideration. If you'd like any of them pulled for further discussion, you may do so at this time.
I'd like to pull item B.
Item B?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I move to approve item A and C.
I'll second.
Motion has been made to approve item A and C by Commissioner Clark, seconded by Commissioner Love. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. On item B is to consider and take action on Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-five dash zero six seven, approving and awarding commission grant funds in the amount of two thousand dollars to Craving for a Change Foundation. Commissioners, I do wanna let you know that is a typo. It reads twenty-five hundred. The application, uh, submitted on behalf of the organization is two thousand. So, uh, we did have some discrepancies, but I wanna clear and set the record that it's two thousand, not two thousand five hundred, that some of our sheets may say. This grant came through Commissioner Deandre Knoxen. I do wanna let the Commissioners also know that Commissioner Knoxen, because of his proximity to the applicant, um, has, has already on file a declaration of conflict of interest, so he will not be participating in this vote or discussion. And so, do you have any other?
Thank you. Yeah, uh, well, the first one you addressed on the amount, there was two separate amounts, and I'm glad you clarified that. And the second thing is, is I just, I just like a, a legal opinion whether or not that's a conflict of interest, where, uh, Commissioner will give grant funds to a spouse, uh, even though it's a five oh one C-three.
He's not giving the grant funds.
Yeah, it's a grant fund, but it's, he's, he's making the award. That's who he selected to make the award to.
So, he's not selecting. The selection is up to the commission. Each Commissioner here has, uh, in our budget, an allocation of upwards of five thousand dollars that can be allocated through various nonprofits. The nonprofit either contacts the Commissioner, or the Commissioner can contact the nonprofit based upon known needs. Cravings for a Change decided to, uh, submit her application through Commissioner Knoxen, and that's not prohibited.
Yeah, I understand everything you said, and I thank you for repeating that for the knowledge for everybody else. Um, but my concern is that the, the rep, him selecting to give his portion of the funds and the Commissioner's approval, it would appear to be a conflict of interest, because that is his spouse, who, who is the chairman of that five oh one C-three. I don't wanna vote on something that is not right or in conflict of interest according to the city charter. And I was asking for a legal opinion.
He's not voting on this, so it doesn't violate the city charter.
It's not the voting, it's the idea of him...
Understand the idea. I just read the law.
Yeah, I don't understand that. That's whatever, Mayor. That's fine.
Well, because you mentioned the charter, I do wanna clarify. Our city charter states that a Commissioner may abstain from a vote if there is a financial conflict of interest or perception of one, and, and that's what he's doing. And so, we have fulfilled those, um, requirements. No Commissioner can award single-handedly any monies to any entity in the city of Texas City without it coming before the entire commission. And so, it's, it's still up to us to make that vote.
I have no further comment.
Commissioners, are there any other comments or concerns with this agenda item?
Is the applicant present?
Uh, the applicant is not present, uh, but, uh, if anybody has any questions, I can speak on behalf of this applicant. I will say that Craving for a Change has, um, been a staple in this community, helping the youth of our community. I will speak on behalf and say that not only has that organization been helping the youth of our community, they've helped the city of Texas City. They've done some training of our youth camp counselors at our summer youth camp program. They, uh, are tasked with working with our students of our summer higher internship program. Craving for a Change provides career counseling, uh, to those students. Um, they've won awards in the community, and I believe they've submitted some attachments. Um, Ms. Ramari, do you have some attachments from?
Yes, sir.
From some of the things that they have done. Uh... They've partnered with several entities throughout the city of Texas City, and some of their partnerships, um, can be seen, uh, here. They've partnered with the Cambrel Foundation, which is a local nonprofit. They've also, uh, partnered with Texas City Independent School District. They work in the after-school program, the Twenty-First Century Program, partner with the, uh, Rescuing Rainbow Foundation, Rescuing the Rainbow Foundation, uh, Texas Southern University, and, uh, so again, they are a well-known, um, nonprofit who is based in the city of Texas City, working with our Juvenile Justice Center, uh, SEL, Social and Emotional Learning, throughout, uh, the Texas City Independent School District. And, uh, so quite a bit, quite a bit. They've offered some scholarships, and so I'm pleased and very happy to be positioned to help a local nonprofit of this magnitude in our community. Those are some of the interns and people that they've, that they've worked with from our program. Also partnered and worked with the College of the Mainland. Uh, these applications, before they make it to the agenda, before they make it to the city commission agenda, they are vetted by our Grants Management Department. We have staff over there in the Grants Management, uh, with over thirty years of Grants Management experience, who goes through and makes sure that they meet all the qualifications. And so, that has happened before it's come to us for consideration. If there are no more questions or concerns, we'll entertain the motion.
I move to approve. Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Clark to approve the two thousand dollar commission of grant to Cravings for a Change, seconded by Commissioner Bowie. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. I believe that was five-two. What was that?
He, he didn't vote. It's not five-two, is it?
I'm sorry, four-two. I'm sorry. You're right. Four-two. I did math wrong.
Still passes?
Did, did we? It still passes, four-two. I'm sorry. Just for the record, did you vote aye?
I did.
Okay, so, four, four-two, with one extension. Um, thank you very much. On regular items, um, we are moving to regular item seven, A. We are to consider and take action on Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-five dash zero six-six, approving extension one for bid number Twenty Twenty-four dash zero zero four, reinforced concrete, pipe, curb inlets, catch basins, and joint sealer annual contract. Uh, we'll hear from Mr. Jack Harrelson of Public Works.
Yes, sir, Mayor. This is, uh, this agenda item is for a annual contract extension for, uh, the, the company who we currently have been purchasing our reinforced concrete pipe, curb inlets, uh, storm inlets, uh, grates, things such as that, and our, uh, joint sealer. So this is, uh, they haven't changed their price, or they're holding their, their, uh, their prices, uh, identical to the, uh, agreement that we signed last year with them.
Yeah, that's rare. That's pretty good.
It is.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners, or Mr. Harrelson?
I'll move to approve.
Move to, a motion has been made to approve by Commissioner Garza, seconded by Commissioner Clark. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. This time, we will consider and take action on the second reading of Ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-five dash twelve, amending the Code of Ordinances for the City of Texas City, Title Nine, entitled General Regulations, Chapter Ninety-four, Health and Sanitation by prohibiting the placement of outdoor donation bins or receptacles for clothing or other items in public or private property. We'll hear from our Fire Marshal's Department.
How's it going, uh, uh, Mayor and Commissioners? My name's Ian, Assistant Fire Marshal for the Texas City Fire Department, in case if you all haven't met me. Appreciate the opportunity to speak again regarding the, uh, proposed ordinance on the donation boxes. Uh, since our last reading, I felt it was important to your attention. We had two recent tragedies that, um, occurred, two fatalities that occurred in Crosby, Texas, and Plantation, Florida, in regards to these donation boxes. So, um, those heartbreaking events, uh, serve as a reminder that these boxes, these boxes can pose real and immediate dangers to the public.
Can you tell us a little bit about how, like, fatality may occur with these donation boxes?
So it was, um, vagrants that had entered the boxes, trying to retrieve items from the boxes, and once they were inside the box, they were unable to get out. And so, they had asphyxiated and passed away, until someone realized.
That was the same for both?
Yes, ma'am.
Do, do you have something? Do you have any type of attachments on this?
Uh, there was a news article in regards, I just mentioned them.
Oh, okay.
There is a news article in regards to those.
That those lids only go one way?
Yeah. And then they had a problem getting back out, 'cause they went in headfirst, so they were unable to get back out. So by the time someone rescued them or found them, it was too late.
Okay. Uh, any questions, any other questions of our Assistant Fire Marshal?
Sure, yeah.
Motion to approve.
We have some more pictures as well, if you all are interested in seeing those.
Okay. These are just pictures for the, uh, general audiences, uh, awareness of what we are, what we are considering, prohibiting these collection bins. I'm sorry, I did get a motion to approve by Commissioner Bowie. Was there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Sharp. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This time, we are on, uh, item seven, C, seven C, to consider and take action on Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-five dash sixty-nine, accepting the fee proposal and approving entering into a contract for architectural services with PGAL for the new municipal complex. Mr. Jack Harrelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, sir, we had a, um, request for qualifications from, uh, a number of, uh, architects, and we selected as a group, uh, that PGAL would be the, uh, most highly qualified and best fit for the design of our new municipal complex. So that's what this agenda item is, is to, uh, accept their fee proposal and to, uh, approve the mayor to, uh, enter into a contract with PGAL for the design, uh, of, of the municipal complex. And I'm available for any questions.
All right. Commissioners, any questions on this particular agenda item?
Have they worked on any of the other, uh, municipal complexes that we've seen, from like Navasota or Sugar Land?
They, they have. They've done, uh, uh, Navasota. They've also, Sugar Land was a big one that they did. And Sugar Land, uh, not just the style, but, but the scope, as well as the forethought that they put into that one, I think would fit us, uh, to a T. So they, they have the experience and the personnel to be able to, uh, more so than any other, uh, architect that, that we, we interviewed.
Where are they out of?
They're, they're out of Houston. They're Houston-based. Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you for asking, Commissioner Sharp, 'cause there was some misinformation at one of our, uh, previous sessions, uh, that we had out at Lago Mars. There was a citizen who stated they were based in London, and that was just not factual. They are a Houston-based, um, architectural firm.
Someone told me they were Nigerian.
Been based for over eighty years. Any other questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Knoxen to approve this agenda item, seconded by Commissioner Clark. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. I believe that was six-one. Thank you very much. Next agenda item is to consider seven D, consider and take action on Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-five dash zero seven zero, accepting the fee proposal and approving entering into a contract for architectural services with Joiner Architects for the new fire station number five. Also, Mr. Harrelson.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Uh, this is similar to the, uh, the last agenda item, but this is for, um, the fire station number five project. Uh, Joiner Architects, uh, once again, we did the same process of selecting, uh, we asked for statements of qualifications. Joiner was the architect on fire station four. Uh, they were heavily vetted for that project. When we interviewed them, um, you know, we reviewed their statements of qualifications. Uh, it's kinda hard to go against our own, um, our own, you know, process, all our own recommendations. So, uh, I, I heavily recommend these guys for this project. I think we're gonna have the, the best fire station yet with this next one.
Thank you, Jack. Commissioners, any, any questions or concerns with this, uh, agenda item?
It's not a concern, but this one is, uh, about half the amount of fire station four?
It's not, eh, not exactly half, but it will be less, Commissioner, because it doesn't have a, uh...
Substation.
It does have a substation and all.
Motion to approve item D.
Second.
Uh, one question. Is, is the number of bays different also, or is it the same number of bay, uh, proposed?
Yeah, two bay versus a three bay.
Okay. Uh, a motion has been made by Commissioner Bowie to approve this agenda item, seconded by Commissioner Garza. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. At this time, we will hear, um, from our city engineer as we consider and take action on the first reading of Ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-five dash zero six, amending the Texas City Code of Ordinances by creating Chapter One Sixty-two, entitled Battery Energy Storage Systems, and amending the Code of Ordinances, Title Fifteen, entitled Land Usage, Chapter One Sixty, entitled Zoning, to designate Section One Sixty point zero five one, District SP, which is site plan, as the zoning designation for battery energy storage systems and similar projects. Uh, Ms. Kim Golden?
Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. So we are bringing to you this ordinance that is doing two things. It is, um, amending our zoning ordinance to say that the battery electrical, um, storage systems must be rezoned into District SP, and then it is also creating a Chapter One Sixty-two, a new chapter in your Code of Ordinances that has all the specifics about a battery electrical storage system, and, um, the things that we will want to see through the development plan process, through the permitting process, and then, once they're in place, how they're going to be inspected and the way... So it's basically the life cycle of these systems. So it's a very comprehensive amendment that you're making to the ordinance, to the Code of Ordinances, and it's for the purpose of being able to bring these projects in and live with them, you know, very comfortably, without creating any conflicts in the community. The, um, zoning commission is recommending the, um, change to make it, uh, a District SP, because the District SP, which again is a tool that's already in your zoning ordinance, has the flexibility and is intended to be used for these type of, um, unique, um, uses that aren't already included in another, um, district, but also it enables them to go anywhere in the city. And the reason that's important is these battery electrical storage systems need to be situated close to substations. And so, our substations are all over the city. And so, this is a tool that has the flexibility to deal with the situations now and to actually grow with the city and be adaptive as it needs to be, um, as the city grows, as the technology grows, as the substations grow. Um, and so, that's why we're bringing it forward to you again. We have, um, this is our third time we've brought something to you, but between the last one and this one, we got some input from the specific projects that are working with us. We got some input from our, um, third-party experts who work all over the world on this kind of thing. And we also, again, worked with our own attorney, fire marshal, and chief building official, again, to refine this and tweak this. Um, and, and again, we think it's a really good tool that's gonna serve Texas City well, going forward with these kinds of projects. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Golden. Any questions or comments, Commissioners?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to comment, and thank you for getting, uh, the fire department involved with, uh, doing the assessment so that they can work safely in handling this product, as well as the, the correct training. Uh, I appreciate the amount of time that you put in into pulling all this data together for us. Thank you.
Just me? I'm glad to do it.
And I'd like to say as well, I, with us dealing with this on the planning board for so long and seeing so much, I know how much time y'all have put into this. So I think it's, um, after reading through all of that, it's obvious how much time and effort was put into this by so... it's obvious how much time and effort was put into this by so many different experts. So I just want to thank you for all that you've done. So we finally, finally will have something in place for when these do come to us and stuff. So I, I do want to thank you for that, all of y'all that went in on, on this, on, on coming up with this. So very much appreciated.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments, questions? Now we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion has been made to approve this particular ordinance, twenty twenty-five dash zero six, by Commissioner Bowie, seconded by Commissioner Sharp. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. That was pretty quick there. This time we're up to Commissioners' comments, we're going to start with you, Commissioner Clark. Well, we, we put, we played the reverse card on, you know.
That's okay, I'm ready. I, I don't have anything to say myself because I have stuff to say for Barbara. She wants to thank the city for the money that she got for the, the commissioner grant for, uh, school supplies. And she said she spent every last bit of it and it was very, very, uh, she's very grateful for it. And thank you very much for that.
All right.
And she still collects school supplies around town, here, I think, Fire Station, wherever, still collecting school supplies. And if anybody, again, will say, uh, on August second, she's, uh, they're stuffing bags and getting school supplies ready to give out at Blocker. So if you have time on August second, between nine and one, she could certainly use some help. And other than that, I just want to wish everybody a very happy and safe Fourth of July.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
I just want to wish everyone a happy Fourth of July. Be careful. Be careful with your fireworks.
Thank you, Commissioner Garza.
They said what I was going to say, so I'll just ditto their comments.
All right, that's it. Commissioner Bowie?
I have no comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Love?
I'll see everyone Friday.
All right. Commissioner Knoxon?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to mention that, uh, last week, uh, myself and Commissioner Clark had the, uh, privilege to welcome a new family to Texas City. Um, thanks to Bay Area Habitat for Humanity and Valero Refinery, and also the Moody Foundation for sponsoring that, uh, project. Um, Ms., um, Crystal and Abeline are the names, uh, mother and her daughter, are becoming new homeowners here in Texas City and also in my district. So, uh, it was, it was a great privilege for me to be there to welcome them for their home dedication. Also had, uh, the opportunity to spend some time volunteering through my job. Spent four hours, um, installing some siding, so I got some, some hands-on experience. So Jack, if you need me, you know, pull me in. But, uh, I just wanted to mention that and, uh, just want to thank the commission who, uh, voted on, uh, the agenda item that was approved for Cravings for Change. Uh, as you saw and as you heard from Mayor Johnson, they've been doing a lot of great work here in the city of Texas City. So I just wanted to thank the commission for their, um, vote.
Thank you very much, sir. Here at the Mayor's comments, I just want to, uh, wish everybody a great upcoming holiday, Fourth of July. I do want to, uh, say thank you to the Fire Marshal Department and the Police Department as they go out to ensure that all of our citizens are having a very safe, uh, Fourth of July. We always like to gather on the dike and enjoy the firework display by the Texas City J.C.s and, and just really bring the family out for a good time and some music and things like that. I do want to tell the residents that we have heard you and we are responding to your calls and complaints about those who are illegally popping fireworks in the city of Texas City. Uh, we want to be safe and let you know that we will be out to enforce our ordinance that has been in place for decades in Texas City. And we want to make sure that everybody, um, stays safe. Uh, congratulations, uh, to our very own partner, Cravings for Change, for her commission grant. Uh, I just want to let everybody know a couple of things about these commissions, uh, Commissioners' grant. Uh, I believe we started this in twenty twenty-two. This, this administration started, started, uh, issuing those, uh, commissions grant to assist local nonprofits to, uh, to help Texas City citizens and the different things, uh, that they do. Oftentimes, we hear of this term called conflict of interest. You know, it's conflict of interest. There's many different ways you can have a financial conflict of interest with proximity, with relationships and so on and so on. And I want to let, uh, our citizens know that, um, there is nothing wrong with having a conflict of interest. A conflict of interest is not illegal. What's illegal is when you do not declare the conflict of interest and make it publicly known. And so many times conflicts, conflicts of interest cannot be avoided. But we do have the, uh, process by which you submit your declaration of that conflict of interest so that in full transparency, uh, you can appropriately abstain or let, let your relationship be known with that, uh, third-party entity. And so, uh, oftentimes, people of the general public are unaware of that. And so I just wanted to, to share that. In order to receive, if you are a nonprofit organization and you would like to apply or approach one of these commissioners in, uh, hopes of getting some type of financial assistance, there's, there's just a handful of qualifications. The two main, uh, important ones is you need to be a Texas City nonprofit organization. That's it. Because we want to use our Texas City funds to help Texas City organizations. You need to be a local nonprofit organization. Or if you're surrounding a nonprofit organization, you'd be able, you need to be able to prove, show and prove that your, uh, goods and services are directed towards Texas City residents. Right? And if you can do that, and that has been vetted by our Department of Grants Management, then it comes before the commission and then we make a collective decision on whether or not, uh, those funds can be adequately used for the purpose that you request. Uh, each one of the commissioners has up to five thousand dollars. Sometimes they allocate that in totality to one organization. Or sometimes they split it up, you know, one thousand, two thousand here and there to different organizations depending upon what was requested. So there has been some questions about, uh, that process. I hope I cleared that up a little bit. But if anybody has any questions, they can certainly call our Office of Grants Administration and, uh, get some more information about the commission's grants. So that's all I have to say about that. I will extend a blanket, uh, request to all of the staff that's out there. If you have any updates or departmental, um, information that you'd like to share with us, go ahead and line up and approach the podium. Of course, Recreation and Tourism, who never stops, uh, planning and doing great things for our citizens, always has something to share. Ms. Nicole Miller?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm very excited to tell you what we have going on in July. Um, so we started, um, registration July first for our Carver Kickball League. It's going to be a two-month registration that's hoping to gain momentum, um, to get this new league out there. So the, um, the games will start September first. We're really hoping to get a lot of teams out there. So, uh, look out for that, sign up. It's two seventy-five for each team or twenty-three for a free agent. You can sign up individually and we'll place you on a team. I'm very excited by that. Our, uh, July fourth celebration, um, and parade, the parade starts at ten AM and then we'll have the concert start at seven PM at Bay Street Park. So be sure to come out for that. Um, we have our cheer camp, that's coming up on July the seventh at Carver Park. So this is our second year, um, with that program. And our camp podcast starts on, on July, um, eighth with, um, uh, we have about six already signed up and we did get, um, the community involved wanting us to up the age groups, so we listened to them. And now it's, it's, uh, we're going all the way up to eighteen years old, so we're very excited for that. Um, our next movie in the park is at the Carver Center and that is July eleventh. And then, um, we have, um, the next movie in the park, July twenty-fifth, at the Rotary Pavilion. Thank you.
Had a good time, thank you. Had a good time at the, uh, last movie in the park, uh, served Wicked.
Yes.
And, uh, that was a good movie. I didn't, I wasn't able to stay for the whole time, but
It's a long one.
And so thank you for that, uh, good turnout. Love to see family coming out and enjoying the outdoors with that.
Great, thank you.
And the kids fishing tournament was a lot of fun, too. Yeah, you had a lot of kids out there and stuff, that was a great day.
Ms. EDC, how you doing, Ms. Edwards?
I'm good, how are you?
All right.
Good, good evening, everybody. I just had two things. First, uh, in the same vein as Commissioner Knoxon's comment about the Habitat for Humanity home, I just wanted to commend the EDC because not this home, but the previous home that they dedicated, that land was donated by the EDC to Habitat for Humanity for that purpose. And we hope to continue that practice in the coming years. So just really wanted to reiterate that the EDC also truly supports Habitat for Humanity and we're grateful for that opportunity. I did also want to bring up to the group that on Saturday, July twenty-sixth, we will have our grand opening for the Sixth Street Community Plaza. The event will start at ten, it'll go through two PM. Yes, there is a Taylor Swift cover band going and no, I can't get you an autograph. But, um, we will have food trucks, we'll have water play area, we'll have the performance stage where Reputation, the band, will be performing. And we'll have a dog park, all in the same footprint and all free for citizens to access. So please come celebrate with us on the twenty-sixth. We're hoping that this turns into a community asset that a lot of families can enjoy.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. We're certainly thankful to EDC for, uh, assisting. Habitat for Humanity always has people in line for a home. The biggest challenge is where will we build it? Where, how does Habitat afford the land in which to build the home? And so they have partnered with EDC and EDC had some surplus property. We were able to, uh, provide them for that home. So Mr. Donovan is very thankful for, for that on Fourth Street, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick things. I want to give an ad a boy to our Communications Department. I know they take a lot of heat around this time of year because of our efforts to confiscate or kind of suppress the fireworks shows. So we do appreciate them. And second, anyone who has already purchased fireworks, but now you're having second thoughts, you can meet the, uh, fire marshals in the back and we can dispose of those for you. Have a safe Fourth of July.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much. Yes. Thank you again to Communications Department, they're so good in, uh, informing the public. Anyone else, City of Texas City? All right. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn. Have a good day. Have a good day.